Okay, if you could do the roll call, please.
Bill Bitteries. Carl Fancher.
Here.
Laura Latice. Robert Norman.
Here.
Kelly Smith.
Here.
Terry Sutton.
Here.
Richard Irwin.
Here.
Maurice Stuber. Diane Williams.
Here.
Wee Monin.
Here.
Okay, we pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Just a little bit out of order than usual, but what we're going to do first is go over the public live streaming policy that I passed out to you folks. I sent it out last week. If you get any comments, so I guess you liked it. So I'm going to ask if, Carrie, could read it, please? A little bit louder, just in case you... I tested it this morning. My wife said from there to there was pretty good, but I don't know without...
Well, I don't tend to be the loudest person. Town of Consville streaming and recording policy for public meetings. The purpose of this policy is to identify a process for those citizens who wish to livestream or record Consville town board meetings. The intent is to reduce or eliminate misunderstandings and to have a clear understanding of what is expected of the town and of those who wish to livestream or record town board meetings. There are two Wi-Fi routers at Consville Town Hall. One is exclusively reserved for town business. The other router is a public Wi-Fi currently known as Consville, New York. The town will make the Consville, New York router available to those persons wishing to livestream meetings. In the event there is insufficient bandwidth to maintain two simultaneous livestreams, any livestream conducted by the town will take precedent if the town is doing a livestream. If there is insufficient bandwidth for three livestreams, the town will decide which party will conduct the second livestream with the intent of sharing the opportunity equally among the public. The town will place its streaming and recording devices and equipment in a location it deems the most optimal for those viewing the meeting. Other parties streaming and/or recording meetings may place their devices and equipment in the meeting room so that it does not interfere with or disrupt the meeting or the town's streaming and recording. For security reasons and to protect the town's IT assets from being breached, the town will not allow, under any circumstance, non-town-owned equipment to be physically attached to or connected to the town router assets unless specifically authorized by the town board. Further, members of the public will not be permitted access to the room containing the routers and other town-owned IT equipment unless authorized by the town board. Non-town-owned equipment must be removed from Town Hall after each meeting. In the event of an executive session by the town board or a caucus by a town board member of the same political party, streaming and/or recording will be suspended while the executive session or the caucus is being conducted. All equipment used for streaming and recording will be disconnected and removed from the building. When the executive session or caucus is concluded and the board meeting returns to its regular open meeting process, sufficient time will be given for the purpose of reconnecting the equipment and to resume livestreaming and recording. The person conducting a livestream or a recording has the same privilege of the floor as the public. Outside of exercising privilege of the floor granted under the Town of Consville privilege of the floor policy, the operator of the livestreaming or recording equipment will not narrate or otherwise make comments during the meeting. The town board may from time to time revise this policy by majority vote of the board. The town clerk will post notices at the Town Hall that this process for streaming and recording by the Consville Town Board meeting is available on request and will also be made available at meetings.
Thank you. Any comments, members of the board? Suggestions? Motions?
I'm in motion.
So you have a motion, and we have a second from Kelly. All those in favor say aye.
Any opposed? So carried.
Okay, now we're going to privilege of the floor. I know Fred, you asked previously, and you'll be the first one up. I understand there's several others too, but we'll start with Fred.
Sure.
Our policy is three to five minutes. We'll go with five.
That's all right. I mean, I do want to be there. I just wanted to reach out. You guys all received this in your mailbox this weekend, and I wanted to let you know we'll be doing regular newsletter-type things in order to bring the community together, so if the town has any information they want to provide us so that we can include it on upcoming newsletters, new businesses opening, new events, things of that sort that we could utilize to help bring people together and help develop community. We feel that having newsletters with information on the back, like you see, people could stick on their cabinet inside is really helpful. People have already commented how they've already stuck it on their fridge, so that's positive. But I just wanted to let you know that the first one, as you guys all saw, is out, and we'll keep doing them, and wanted to let you know, provide any information if you want to be included in our newsletters. That's it.
Thanks, Fred. Who's next, Carrie?
Amanda. I just wanted to thank the Town Highway Department this last storm. It was a bit crazy. I know you're short-staffed as much as everyone is. We're all a bit short-staffed at this time, but thank you for keeping the roads as good as they could be with all the ice and snow.
That was a real challenge, wasn't it? I'm complimenting you, so...
Thank you. You guys are... worked pretty hard this last storm.
Yes. It's still solid ice and stuff.
And we're still fighting the ice.
Yep.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the nice comments.
I also had one more thing. In regards to the newsletter that is being published, I wanted to know if the town has any authority over the fact that it says Town of Consville, but it's not identified who the publisher is. So I had many contacts and questions this weekend as to, oh, you guys put out a new flyer, and I said, well, I haven't seen it.
No, unfortunately, and I would like to have seen some acknowledgement of who the publisher is, something to that effect, because I did get a number of calls. People asked me if it was ours, maybe the town's, or some kind of statement I would say not affiliated with the Town of Consville.
It's called the Consville Corner. It says that it's a newsletter. It kind of outlines that it's not to do with the town, and I don't think that we have to disclaim on a newsletter that it has nothing to do with the town. It's a goodwill effort. Thank you would be better than, you know, why did you send that?
It's hard to thank somebody if you don't know who put it out.
Well, if the newsletter says Consville NY, if you go on Consville NY, you will see all the information about it. That was the point. It was to bring people together to see the new website, so that people could see the new presence on the web, what we have to offer as a town, and the newsletter helps allow people to add their businesses to the directory. So if you looked at the newsletter, which if you haven't, I have a copy here, but the newsletter directs you to all the places to look, which would tell you where it was created. There's no ambiguity in who created the newsletter.
Does it have a link to this Town of Consville webpage that's on the Schuhary County?
No, or does their county website have a link to our website?
No, to your website?
Yeah, to the Consville website that we manage.
I didn't know you said "our," so I was a little confused.
"Our" as in Consville. It's a website for the Town of Consville.
Is it approved by the town?
A website doesn't have to be approved by any town.
No, I'm saying your paper is being approved, like...
Doesn't have to be. The Mountain Eagle newspaper goes out to everyone. There's Schuhary News. They don't have to...
Right, but we know who publishes that. Somewhere, if you want credit for the newsletter, then you should have your name or something linked to it.
It says Consville NY.
I have several phone calls this weekend from people asking me who's publishing the newsletter, and I couldn't give them any information, because I knew it didn't come from the town.
Well, all they had to do was read the newsletter, and they would know where it came from.
All right, we're going in circles here. I just think that this is a continuation of the other website, and it's so much, so much easier. I think for you two, if you had said publisher Fred Rockhold, there's nothing wrong with that.
It's not only Fred Rockhold. Multiple people worked on this. I don't do everything alone. This is a gesture of goodwill for the town. I don't understand how anyone could argue that there's anything in this newsletter that's confrontational, negative, disparaging. It's a totally uplifting, positive piece for the town, so whether you guys like it or not, the Consville Corner will be published on a regular basis.
And you had that right to do it, but...
That's right.
Right, but give credit to the people that are participating in it. We're a small community and like to know who gets involved in different things.
All you have to do is go to the website.
Let's not beat this to death, but all I want to say is, it comes across, and not just me, but it comes across to a lot of people in town that it's disingenuous when you present it that way.
What are you talking... disingenuous? There's absolutely nothing about this that looks like the Town of Consville. We have our own logo, our own fonts, our own look. It's called the Consville Corner.
Very nice. Who's next, Carrie?
What more do you need?
Brian?
I was just basically on the same boat, you know, with the newsletter that, you know, we like to know who's writing the information, you know, and if it's information about the town, I feel like the town should be kind of approving the information. That's all.
Who else?
Lance?
All I got to say is, if I get enough junk mail, I don't want to see any more of these in my mailbox.
That's quite all right. It's an EDDM thing.
I don't want to see anymore.
Well, by all means, you can send us a thing to not have something come to your door. I don't know who you are, so if you don't...
My name is Lance Fancher.
Okay, Lance Fancher.
I don't want to see any more in my mailbox.
That's quite all right. You know, the post office puts them in every mailbox. I have very limited control.
I don't want it in my mailbox.
So, well, that's quite all right.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Let us proceed. We have minutes in front of us, quite a few of them, because we have the year-end meeting, we have the organizational meeting, the special meetings. So you have one, two, three, four sets of meetings: December 27th, January 3rd, January 10th, and the 25th of January. And I can tell a military person when she did 25th January 2020. Truth is, I like that better, but people don't appreciate it. So if there's any you want to do separately or you want to do them en masse, that's entirely up to you guys, but... Or reject them if you want. Please don't reject them.
I'd probably approve them all as a whole.
Okay. So I guess that was a motion to approve them. I'll take the second for someone else. We have a second from Bob. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. We have a report from Marie. The assessor approves.
Dear Town Board members, I am into the exemption renewal season and have had very few agricultural exemptions returned so far. I am assuming that is because I am requiring leases for the rental lands that are framed or that are farmed or updated leases. I have to receive renewals back by March 1st if I don't have a lease with a farmer for those who are letting farmers work their land. I will not be able to renew the agricultural exemption for this year per the guidelines the state has set. I have renewed the partial exemption per the resolution that the town approved. Most of all, the forest exemptions have been returned. Usually, in March or April, the state will post renewal lists for the senior star exemption so we can update our system with the renewal exemptions. It has come to my attention that the bills for mailing the exemptions through the county clerk's mailroom still need to be addressed. I had provided it last month, but I'm providing a copy again this month. I have received the yearly list of arms-length sales for Consville. There were 38 sales. These are the sales that were looked at for considering valuation in the town. One of the higher sales was double the 100% current assessed value. 2023 valuation update for the town is coming up, and our state liaison has mentioned that it is suggested the town approves a resolution that supports the update to be completed for the 2023 rolls. The work on that will be done in 2022 for the 2023 rolls, and we'll use the past three years of sales to determine what changes need to be made. When the weather gets to where it isn't frigid all the time, I will be out reviewing the past three years' arms-length sale properties to use the information for the update. I do support a resolution for this. The town should also take advantage of the DATA collection that will... Okay, the data collection. That will be coming available to everyone through the grant the county received. I have come across our county real property system, a couple parcels so far that need information, and the photos do not coincide with the data. Thank you, Maurice Stuber.
Thank you. She's referencing a big grant that the county received for over $600,000. To have data collectors, people who will not do assessments, but will make sure that each property is described correctly. And this way, we're all on the same playing field. Ultimately, some people would like to use it for a way to get to 100% like we are here in Consville. That's a long way to go from some places, but the very least, this is probably going to be four people working for four years to make that happen throughout the county. Big, big job, but the assessors have been pushing for this for a long time, and we just got the grant, I guess, about a month ago. Anyway, we need a motion to accept the assessor's report. I'll make the motion.
How's that, Carrie?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried. Code enforcement officers report. It's the first one in person.
First one in person.
Yes.
This first thing, I'd like to just say hello to the board. Everybody's here. My name is Rich Irwin. I recently taken up the interim position of code enforcement here in Conville. There's a couple things I'll go over. I started doing so far and plan on continuing, but that comes in the past. I've been setting up at home a little office space or some space in my home office to take care of the Town of Consville's CEO responsibilities. Basically, instead of having to drive over Mount Jefferson, instead of having to drive over for a file or a piece of paper or something, I'm just going to work at home the majority of the time. I'll be in town typically on Wednesdays for a couple hours in the morning without a barrier, depending on inspections. I've been familiarizing myself with the Town of Consville's practices and procedures. I'm just trying to get things straight. It's a little different than I'm used to in Jefferson, so it just takes a little bit of time to figure that out. I was given, the PASEO gave me a very large, well-kept bunch of piles, a pile of files. I've been going through them, and I've been separating them out into a couple different categories: current open permits or folders, expired, the incomplete and the completed. And I've come across, currently, we have 31 open permits, eight expired permits, and I've mailed out notifications, so hopefully they'll get on board and be renewed. 14 incomplete folders, which means they're older than a year old and they need something. There hasn't been inspections. There's no CC, there's no CL issue. And I'll follow up with them, same thing, kind of as the weather opens up and I can get out on people's properties and meet with them. But that might take a while, those incomplete folders. I've been coming down here to town, going through the files and filing some paperwork. I'm in the middle of, I just actually had a couple questions that Bill helped me out with as far as filing the New York State Required Annual Code Report. I'm about three quarters done with that, and I think I can be done with that in the next day. And then I made contact, I had contact, I made contact with the DEC concerning the town's flood insurance program, and I need to have a community call with DEC, which I'm not really quite sure what that is, but hopefully by next meeting I'll let you guys know.
I think I had to do it about five years ago. So you can check about, so we're still eligible for some kind of flood insurance or something like that.
Yep, so I'll report back once I can take care of that. So since I started, I've done, completed one certificate of occupancy, one certificate of compliance. I've been out on two building code inspections and just taken a bunch of calls and emails basically concerning open permits. That's it.
Thank you. Conville different than Jefferson?
Just different.
Yeah.
Just different.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Your turn, Carrie.
So for this month, we had five dog license renewals and one building permit renewal that was processed.
Whoa, cold weather, 200 people came.
Yeah.
But we still have to make a motion to approve your report. Carl.
I'll say it.
We have the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Diane?
Okay.
It's not slower, we're...
No.
Not at all. There are 1,351 total tax bills in the town. 290 remain unpaid. I have collected $13,364,884 in nonsense.
Cool. Now you're starting to get the late ones?
Yeah, I got the raise, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
I'll make the motion.
Second. You made the motion, second. All in favor, I'll say it again.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I gotta head of myself.
Sewer district operators report. Don't read all the numbers. If it's just numbers, let's not, let's do the beginning and the end. Listen, okay, read that. Sometimes they give you the daily sewage flow, and I'm serious.
That's the first point.
Well, actually, it is very important to...
Okay, so West Consville wastewater treatment facility monthly update report. This is a monthly update from the West Consville wastewater treatment facility. These are the highlights in your sewer district for previous month. The average daily flow for the month of January was 3,312 gallons a day. Generator transfer switch is not working. Kingsley Power is working on repairing the transfer switch. We received an update from Kingsley Power Systems on who informed us this part has been ordered and will be here mid-February. Pump station number one has had two pump failures due to grease buildup on the pumps. We started to track down where the grease might be coming from in the collection system. We narrowed it down to Bull Hill Road section above house number 121. We then inspected each septic tank in the upper Bull Hill Road section. The septic tank filters were in place and working. We found some grease in house 129 and 160. The next step is to run sewer camera down the sewer main so we can be sure that the lateral grease may, where the lateral grease may be coming from. Spare pumps that were ordered have been delivered to the facility. LVDV operator Travis Castle has taken over as chief operator of the West Consville plant. The yearly New York State DEC's... Okay, report has been completed, signed by the town supervisor, and submitted to the New York State DEC. Tightened well drilling are scheduled to be on-site Wednesday, February 2nd to install the water treatment system for the facility's potable water system. Will you please answer any questions you may have?
All right, for those of you who don't know, we have a new operator, not the same company, Lamont, but it's Travis Castle who is a resident.
Hey, can I just add, well, she... When he was in here the other day, he and I were talking, and he said that what he's seen in the past, and he thinks maybe he thinks here is actually some sort of a biofilm that builds up in the system that caused the pump failure and not necessarily grease.
Really? Okay. I'm telling you, it was driving, they were going out and looking for culverts. And we don't have any restaurants or anything like that that would have leash traps or anything like that. Before they get lost in this sort of town. All right, need a motion to accept the sewer district operator's report.
I'll make the motion.
Carl makes the motion.
Second.
Second. Kelly, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. You're on, Bill. This is yours, so you're first to report.
Yeah. Greetings, all. Again, I'd like to thank Amanda for encouraging words about the roads. I'm going to make sure I tell the guys, because I think they'll appreciate that. I know there was at least one 13-hour day that they were allowed to come out this night. So my first several weeks as highway superintendent have gone as expected. When I jumped on board, there was an issue about, oh, we're going to put it on the roads and so on and so forth, and the material they had gotten was apparently not, was subpar. So I believe improving the existing sand that was here when I took over with the Washbees, it's a material that cover, provided, it tends much more not to clump. And if you see the clump of sand in the road after plows around plowing and sanding, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. And the problem with that is, the plug's up to shoot, the operator has to stop. He's got to climb up on the truck, which is a very unsafe situation, unclump the sand and continue, and it could happen five minutes later again. So we switched to the Washbees, and this is Dave's recommendation. And I would encourage the town to do that moving forward. And then, of course, we got salt, and the guys are, morning of the storm, the guys are in at 5:00 in the morning plowing. And I'd also like to recognize Dave Porter. He has literally been at my disposal to come and give me a hand, any questions I had. He says, I'll be right there. He comes to the shop and helps me work on stuff. Still getting my hands around the paperwork, but Dave has been very good and very, very helpful. I'd like to recognize him. And he's got a lot of stuff on a computer, which is...
I'm going to make him.
I was advised by Jason Mayne, he's a superintendent in Broome in icy condition on our section of the Bays Church Road. Sean and I went down and we looked it over. It looks like it's a low spot, and when they, they plow the road for us, they're very good about doing that. Looks like there was an ice melt and then a refreeze. That's going to require some work, but two of our guys did go back there, unblocked that up, and today, one of the Broome guys actually stopped by the garage and said it looked great and just to let us know that it was better. That's going to need some work. That's going to need probably a guardrail and a culvert, the very end of the Bays Church Road. And most recently, I was up on Chapel Road over here, and there's two guardrails there that are mangled and culverts that go along with them, and so we're going to have to get up in there, and we're going to do it all at the same time, because it's not going to bring equipment to a site once and then bring it back. So we're going to have to get up in there when the weather breaks to fix those two guardrails and culverts.
Well, thank you very much, and I have to say for myself, I think you are, you're critical of yourself. We all are. More than thanks, but you're doing a great job.
Well, thank you. I told you I'm going to try, I'm not perfect, but I'm going to try my best.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept? We have a motion from Carl.
I'll say it.
Bob, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. All right. Now, I've got a couple things. I'll draw that couple. The first thing is my safety county report, and I have two things that I want to talk about. One won't take that long. The other one I'm a little bit passionate about, and I'll try to reach out myself. We've been looking for the last two years to try and sell former public safety buildings, otherwise known as a jam. It's not doing us any good. The camp use is a great thing, it's a... He says he can't do it, but it's that stuff. Yes, exactly. So we thought we had a couple, we tried to make this an economic development thing. Give somebody a great deal, they can bring more people. We had somebody on the book that was going to bring 100 to 125 employees and set up a call center, which I was ecstatic about. Part of the negotiations, I offered them a reduction of $0.03 a square foot for every employee they brought in. Unemployed would have been a reduction of $0.03 a floor. It was worth it to us in terms of, would have bricked the economy. And I'd say they strung us along. It was a big argument. They're based in Central Academia, but their call center was in Florida, and they couldn't get anybody, and they're moving. So that was the end of that deal. Uh, so, anyway, what we've decided to do, it's gonna go out for bid. A proposal. Bid's probably not the right word, a proposal. And what somebody is willing to pay for isn't necessarily the only factor. It's also what is their vision, what do they want us to see? If it's tear down and build something, what are they going to do with it? Because we're trying to tie it into a way to do for the county. It is a nice building, it's not that old. If you ever go to places like Vermont or New Hampshire, sometimes you see these old mills where they convert them into like lawns, doctors' offices, art studios, all that kind of stuff. This place has potential like that, and I, I saw on television, they did this in Saratoga. They sold the building like, an old, much older building than this. This is new, it's got modern plumbing. Also has four levels, four or three levels of jails, cells. But believe it or not, there's, there's places that have actually converted jails into kinds of interesting stuff. But there's also a twenty thousand square foot administration building, which is, has potential. So, that's going to be done, we're gonna present it to the board on Friday. I don't anticipate, I haven't talked to anybody, everybody wants to do what we can, but it's doing else no good. We have to actually, even though it's not a hundred percent lawful, it's lawful, still have to pay something. So it's costing us. No, they're in the new jail. Nice big. Yes, but my funding has been approved and they're gonna add to the new jail. Yes, I mean, but it's, it's equipment, in case of a major flood or something like we had last night. Yes. So I'm excited about that. We have the, the couple of people that are working on it. Skyrie County head outside of Skyrie County Government. And, um, maybe we'll have somebody identified by mayor, who that's interested in buying. We tried to be real fancy with the old Guilford Mills building over in Coblesville. For seven years, we lived there. Kept trying to tie it in grants, but it's not. So finally some outfit from New Hampshire came that makes doors, frames and sashes and all that out of white pine. They warehoused it some of it here, somebody said, happened to see the building, "Oh, who owns that?" Maybe they were interested in it. "No, we can get you," "No, I'm not interested in their grants, give me a price." And you know what? They turned that into a major success, where hundreds of people were working there. It's based in Guilford Mills over in Middlesbrough, it's not Guilford Mills anymore, but.
I know where he got that.
Yeah.
That big long building before he turned into a paragraph.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, he even got a wine fulfilling company there. They have three hundred employees packing wine, trying to get them to write things, you know? But anyway, that, that's, that's a, you'll read about that in the paper probably in the next couple of weeks. Uh, but there's something I am kind of passionate about, and I was sharing it with, with Rich and other people that were here before the meeting. As we all know, the state is hell-bent, and I don't say that in derogatory way necessarily, but the state is hell-bent on making renewable energy, renewable energy a major part of our total portfolio in the state, how we generate electricity. And when we talk about things like solar, we're not talking rooftops, we're talking like three, four, five hundred acres. Montgomery County's gone into it a big way.
They are up in Washington County, too.
Yeah, yeah. Well, here's the problem, though, the state is doing it at the expense of local government. As an example, and I, you have a, I gave you guys a copy of an editorial and an article that was in the paper. It tells it better than I can, but it's just the netted out. In, um, Sharon, town of Sharon, there's a huge project by Next Era, who by the way, has financing from JP Morgan and other people who don't know anything about renewable energy, they just know it's a good way to make a buck, which is fine, just be honest about it. But anyway, once this place was all built, all their rays, several hundred acres, they were expecting to collect two point four million dollars in property taxes. And we had it assessed on our home, and trust me, ninety-seven million dollars valued. Okay. The state has decided, by the way, they don't announce this, they slip it in as part of the legislation and something totally unrelated. Then you find out they passed something making for, not deep, I'll say huge discounts on the assessment. So now, they're going from two point four million dollars annually to four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars annually. That's money, that, that difference is being lost, and this is just one project. There's about a dozen at least going on in the county there in various stages of discussion. And, you know, we say, "Well, that's not gonna hurt us in Combsville." First of all, it's coming to Combsville. We may not be the most desirable, but when the land starts running out in the other, in the big open fields, it's coming. But more immediately, we pay county taxes, obviously, more than we pay, I think, town taxes. Well, guess what? That difference on what would have been between the two point four and the two point nine million, which is our share, someone's gotta make that up. Guess who? We are. Now, there's projects, oh gosh, Skyrie, Carmile, Seward, Middleburg. And, uh, we can't beat it. I mean, I'm not so sure we wanna beat it, but at the very least, keep in mind, there is no infrastructure for everybody to plug their cars in downstate. And this is a, all to the benefit of downstate at the expense of upstate. And if you expend their numbers, if they, the amount of arrays of renewable energy they need, you could be talking between a quarter of a million and a half million acres of this. So we're gonna be one vast renewable energy parking lot from about Vermont border all the way out to western New York state. They don't have, by the way, they can't get the energy down there. So now they're building a massive, and I do mean massive, power line somewhere in Delaware County, down to somewhere in the New York City area. And it's all gonna be buried, okay? That's all goodness. Imagine all the fuss everybody made, and the state did too, when they wanted to do, uh, like natural gas? Remember they all complained about, okay, but it's no, but you.
They're digging for the electric.
Yeah, meanwhile, it's all gonna be right away, eminent domain, all that. That was no good for the natural gas, but it's perfectly good to do it for that. I mean, it is safer, I know that. Plus, they're, they're going to be bringing in, I forget how many gigawatts it is, but they're gonna be bringing in major power from Canada, Hydro Quebec. And they're going to bury that cable in Lake Champlain, and then hook up somewhere down the line with other stuff. I mean, the money is spectacular that they're putting into it, but again, it's costing us. Big, big time. I, I just sort of liken it to the way, I've said this to a couple people, they're treating upstate, meaning all, I don't care the Republican, Democrat, it's got nothing to do with it, they're just treating us like that. The way the British treated the colonies. They took, they did, they ignored us, they sucked us dry, and it's gonna get worse and worse. We have a major economic development initiative in this county. So, property taxes are gonna go up to make the difference. We're trying to get people to come here because the taxes are good. Well, they're not gonna be good that long. It's all at our expense. So, that's enough, I'm passionate about it, but I don't wanna, I wanna keep you awake. Now it's Carrie's turn, though, because, that, yeah, I gave you that, um, three-page resolution.
Oh, the next thing I have on here is your November, December, April reports.
No, I gave it to you this morning.
No, I know, I'm starting off the agenda.
What's that?
I was just.
No, it's not on the agenda, but it's part of this discussion.
This one?
Looks like it. All right, it's a lot, you can ask somebody to switch off and read it. But it's, it's important, and just a thirty-second intro. What this is all about is, the county is working with other counties now, particularly Delaware and Green County, they're trying to work with. But if we're going to, we can't resist it, if we at least get our fair share out of it, that we need to work to get new districts, villages, towns and the county. So, this is a, a request for the, in our case, for the town to opt in as part of this consortium group that's gonna, and by the way, there's a lot of legal fees involved, a lot of legal fees. And by the way, though, these developers make us look like pikers compared in terms of what we can get. But, uh, what, if you read it and then maybe we'll chat about it more, or maybe we'll just get a quick motion. And we don't have to chat about it.
Skyrie County Renewable Industrial Wind Energy Project, pre-application and pilot agreement fee scheduled. Whereas numerous renewable energy industrial wind energy companies have at least a speculative desire to cite renewable energy industry wind energy projects in municipalities throughout Skyrie County. And whereas the majority of this citing and regulatory burden is placed on the town and village host community in which they are located, as the town or village host community is the lead agency and overseer of the comprehensive plan and land use, land use codes. And whereas municipalities and school districts throughout Skyrie County intend to be cooperative with renewable industrial wind energy companies in an effort to support the renewable energy goal of the governor, but desire fair and equitable uniformity. And whereas much time, energy administration and taxpayer dollars are necessary to accommodate renewable energy industrial wind energy companies' requests, while in some cases, the project does not proceed past a speculative stage for various reasons. And whereas this process is placed yet another demand and burden on the limited resources of local municipalities with an essentially de facto unfunded mandate imposed by the state. And whereas an unreasonably heavy burden is placed upon local town supervisors, mayors, clerks, code enforcement officers, council and county planning employees, whom are uncompensated for this additional workload that stresses the limit, stresses the limited administrative capabilities. And whereas the towns, villages receive no compensation should any speculative project not result in construction and operation. And whereas, Skyrie County Board of Supervisors agreed to pass in opt-in or opt-out resolutions in an effort to assist municipalities create fair, equitable, consistent taxing agreements throughout the county. And whereas this resolution sets a fee schedule for municipalities to utilize in order to promote consistency in compensation for their time, efforts and related expenses. And whereas a pre-application fee of ten thousand per rated megawatt project, MW, megawatt per idea.
Yes.
Project capability will be required by renewable energy industrial wind energy companies payable to the host town or village at a minimum wow, it's compensatory, my eyes are messing with me. At twenty-five thousand per rated project, um, megawatt applicable to project with rated capacities of less than two point five megawatt. And whereas, a maximum pre-application fee of one hundred and fifty thousand will be required payable to the host town or village for projects with rated capacities greater than fifteen megawatt capacity. And whereas, the pre-application fee is held by the town or village host community, and whereas the pre-application fee is, fees are seventy-five percent refundable, contingent upon Skyrie County School Districts and Towns, Villages, Projects approval in addition to an accepted pilot payment in lieu of taxes, agreement with twenty-five percent of pre-application fees retained by the town and village. Whereas if any project is not approved by Skyrie County School District and Town Village within one year of the initial official inquiry, including an accepted pilot agreement, the pre-application fee shall be non-refundable unless otherwise agreed upon by the interested parties, including the county, school districts, town, village. The pre-application fee will be distributed with seventy-five percent being retained by the town, village, and twenty-five being allocated to the county. And whereas, the official inquiry is defined as first contact, including introductory meetings with project host community officials by renewable energy developers, that requires an official host community written response of any kind. And whereas, no renewable industrial wind energy or other energy project planning, including site survey, public hearing, et cetera, will be undertaken until pre-application, the pre-application fee is paid in full by the developer owner. And whereas, in addition, a pilot agreement will be negotiated and agreed upon between the county, school districts, towns and village where applicable, subject to a minimum of twenty thousand dollars per megawatt or full value taxation payable to and distributed between Skyrie County School Districts, Town and Village where applicable. And whereas, this fee schedule does not include application fees required by the code enforcement officer, nor the inclusion of any accepted decommissioning plan, which shall be distinct and separate from pre-application fees and pilot agreement. Resolve that the town of Combsville opt in to the uniform agreement between Skyrie County School Districts, Towns, Villages, Governments and Town Clerks, and directed, is directed to provide a copy of this resolution to the clerk or the board of supervisors with a copy of this resolution.
Thank you. That was good. Does anybody wanna hear it again? No, but the gist of it is that we've had a couple times where these outfits come in, we have one over, it's supposedly a renewable energy, you're not gonna get into that one over huge energy, but it's very similar. They come in, they, they have loads of work that they, they dump on the, the local municipality. "I need this, I need surveys, I need information," but, and they work with it. You know what? Maybe this isn't that great a deal. I mean, we put a lot of time and effort into this. So, they already started doing that in certain towns, and I, I know two that they gladly put up seventy-five thousand dollars just to start the conversation. So that, you know, in other words, you get the bottom feeders out of there, the ones that are actually serious. Because you're wasting your time on them. It's like selling cars, you, you know the person you wanna go out to the lot with, the one that's just looking. But that, that, that's, and by the way, we've had one, another one said, "You know, we changed our mind, we want our money back, we need the contract." So, what we're trying to do is, we can't make them go away. And I'm not so sure we wanna make all of them go away, but some places it doesn't make sense. But, at the very least, we should try to get as much, or recoup as much as we can. And that comes with things like the code enforcement officers' fees. I mean, if someone's gonna pull up a two-hundred acre solar array, we're not looking for a fifty-dollar building permit here. We're looking for something like maybe in six figures. And that's perfectly, that's, that's the way you do it. And it's, we have to, I mean, at least get something to recoup our losses. So does anybody have any comments about this? This is, this is gonna be big news, and it already is in some circles, but this is gonna be more and more the focus of, uh, conversation and attention in our county, and in our towns.
Sounds like this was a witch's gift protecting us.
No, absolutely. I mean, we can, we can opt out of it too if we want at a later date, but why would we want to? We, there's no downside. So is that a motion?
Would you like that to be a motion?
Yes, I would.
Is actually a roll call?
Yes, there'll have to be a roll call, but he made a motion.
Yeah, even with a roll call, you still make a motion and a second, aye?
Well, you're the second, I think, my name.
Carl Banter?
Aye.
Phil Petrie?
Aye.
Ryan Tite? Robert Crowman?
Aye.
Kelly Smith?
Aye.
Thank you.
Bill, is every other, are other towns making similar resolutions?
Yeah, this is the.
This is everyone, every town's doing.
Inserted name of town, so this is the same template. Yeah, definitely. We have a guy over in, the supervisor of the town of Lenin that I appointed chairman of the energy committee. So it can't be that bad, it's almost a full-time job.
Yeah.
It is huge. All right, town business. The November and December financial report you have that was sent to you on the separate cover and also as part of the, the agenda. Any comments, questions?
Motion? I'll make the motion acceptable.
Okay, Kelly makes the motion. I'll second. Bob's second. I'll certainly have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Okay, next thing is something called short-term rental regulations. What that is, is another word like that breakfast bean, things like that. And they're popping up in a lot of places, more than some than others, but there's a number of them here we don't even know about. Jefferson, and Rich could speak to this, an amazing number that they weren't aware that they even had. And there's exposure to the towns, in that they, if they are rentals, and I don't mean like a lease to live there, if it's under 30 days, those businesses, and that's what they are, are subject to certain regulations for lodging. And if the town, correct me if I say anything wrong, I mean, if the town knows they're doing that and doesn't regulate them, like with an annual fire inspection, safety inspection, I guess you could fight it, but you'd have to, you would have some culpability if something went south. So, I have a, they passed a local law in Jefferson, I mean, that's a little bit more intense because they have a lot more over there, but in the next month or two, I'd like to talk to you folks about doing something along those lines that protect us. I mean, if you have people staying in there, and I'm just, it's just at a very high level, there's a lot of different things behind it, if you have some, you're renting a house out to somebody, okay? There are certain things that you need to do as a renter, or not a renter, what's the right word, a lodger, not...
Landlord.
Land, no, it's not even a landlord.
It's a host.
Yeah.
It's a host.
A host, all right, that's, yeah. So, anyway, I just, that's just to tell you what's coming down the line. We can ignore it, but I don't think that's a wise thing to do. DEP resolution request, that's the one you just read, so maybe we need to not only carry it, we can skip over that.
Will that breathe again?
Well, actually, it's a different DEP level request, I apologize, but this one's a lot shorter.
It is?
Yep.
Okay. Resolution affirming property owner request to DEP to place no hunting signage 500 feet from property owner's property line. Whereas the residence of the property of Tyler Latta at 396 Vulcan Road in the town of Consville in Scahary County shares contingency property line with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, whereas Mr. Latta is concerned with hunting on that portion of DEP land within 500 feet of their shared property line. Whereas the DEP has stated they would honor Mr. Latta's request for the DEP to post notices prohibiting hunting at points 500 feet from the shared property line. And whereas the DEP has requested the consent of the Consville Town Council to Mr. Latta's request to post no hunting notices at 500 feet from the shared property line. Therefore, be resolved, the Consville Town Council, it's confirmed that the DEP posts no hunting signs at points 500 foot distance from the shared property line of Mr. Latta and the DEP.
Yeah, I got a call from Tyler asking that we do it, and DEP was really good about it, but they don't make a move anymore without the town approving it, which I guess is all right.
Sounds like they're all for it, so we approve it.
Yeah, so it's already been introduced, we need a second. No, sir. We have a second from Bob. I'll wait to do a little call.
Carl Banter?
Aye.
Bill Peddery?
Aye.
Mark Tice?
Aye.
Robert Crowman?
Aye.
Kelly Smith?
Aye.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, these, the next two sort of go together, a little weird combination though. CEO interview scheduling and audit update document, and there's a reason for that. We appointed Rich, and Rich is doing a fantastic job, but we did say we would entertain other athletes, you had one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we should do the interview, I mean, we're very happy with the job you're doing, but we need to do the two interviews as we said, but we also need to do a special meeting to approve the audit update document, we just got, I think it was on Friday, and I just didn't have time to go through it, we can't, and Pat is waiting, Pat Buhl is waiting to send it to the state after he gets approval from the town. So, what I'm proposing is, it's still too burdened on so, so to speak, the night we do the interviews, we can do the audit update document, because that's really a good deal. So, I'm recommending February 24th, we still have the posting of the paper and all that stuff, and it still gets, it's got to be to the state by the end of the month, he'll take care of that, he just, for the CEO and everything, yeah. Is that date good with everybody?
Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
I don't know right now.
Granddaughter's coming to the state for a talk, give me a break. Okay, so we can do that on that day? Carl? Well, we have to have three people warming up for, for, that's true. Okay, the next thing, JCAP.
Seven o'clock.
Seven, yeah, just to reference, yeah, seven o'clock. JCAP grant update, JC is Justice Court, I don't know what the AP is, but what it is, the Judge Dirk, and she applied for a grant to the state where they have this fund, and it's a big street, of course, it's a lot more street work, and we, Judge replied for improvements to the courtroom, which is also this room. So, we got about $16,000 to make improvements, one of them is the heating system, which will be a split system, we talked about that, but they're only going to give us half, so it's an $18,000 system, I think. Yeah, yeah, but this thing here has been here for at least 15 years, it's not bad, but going back to what we were saying, they're going to be outlawing fuel, new fuel burning units in the next five to 10 years.
Is it?
Yeah, well, you can deliver as much fuel oil.
That's a bad...
Yeah, but anyway, I think it's a good thing to have, they'll have AC, the AC comes and goes down, but it also will have another improvement, like replace this floor, or probably not replace it, we'll put a new good surface on it, that'll be linoleum or something like that, that's about $3,000. Some furniture replacement, some things that the judge used, I don't know what they are, like a riser or something, and new cipher door locks, so you get rid of the keys, I think that's, that was a big ticket I, now, it's only $200 a piece before, but it's something that the court, our court, state court wants to do. So, that's just, they're not even asking if we accept it or not, we will get the check or transfer property in April, we have 180 days to do it or give the money back. There will be some breakage when we do this role in terms of how we're going to handle it. In worst cases, if we have meetings, we'll lose the firehouse. Like anything else when you do renovations. All right, that's a point of information, everybody can... Yeah, thank you, Jane, for getting the message, appreciate it. She's done a nice job cleaning up her office, making it look reasonable, that she can actually bring lawyers in there, talk to them. All right, this one here might take a little time, I mentioned this at the last board meeting. And I'm going to have to give you a little history of what's happened since then. We will be going back up to full employment in terms of our four full timers, we have somebody who's gone for his, I'm sure he passed the medical year again, and he starts February 28th. But, it is still a problem to keep good people. We, in light of that, established a $2,000 retention bonus last year for people starting December 1st, and if you're still with us, November 30th, you get $2,000. It's sort of timed, so you get it before Christmas. And there's still, you know, it's very difficult to get good people. So, I mentioned, and I proposed, actually, I'd say that for this week, for this meeting, but I proposed, I mentioned that I would, took a look at a couple of things, first of all, we have four full-timers and two part-timers, that's the equivalent of about five and a half full-time employees. That is the third most employee resource in the county, the second smallest town, it just doesn't add up. And what I am proposing is that what we pay out to these, we're budgeted for...
Basically, well, they've always had four full-timers, and then in the summer, they've always had part-timers.
Yes, but they have them in the winter now too, we never got away from that.
Well, they had them in the winter too, around wind, while the other guys run the plow.
Well, these guys are working 29 hours a week, for the most part, with some exceptions. My point being is, oh, by the way, we don't even do county roads anymore, we don't cut the grass in the park anymore, or the cemeteries, we don't, I mean, it's kind of bizarre that we have that many people, when you have only Kolb skill, who also does the village, that's six or seven people, and you have Gilmore, which, they're outliers, you can't go by them. But, I mean, other towns, bigger than us, have less people on the highway crew. But, what I was proposing now, is that we look at the, what we're spending, four people plus the highway super, and I'm not putting highway super in that, but we use that money to increase the retention bonus from 2,000 to 10,000 dollars, which is really a good thing. When I spoke to the business agent at the Teamsters union, and he said, "Your guys must be doing cartwheels over this." He says, "There are plenty of big trucking companies not doing as good, as good as we're doing." But, and I want them to have that money, but I don't, the whole point of this is to keep them here. If we give them that kind of raise, which by the way, is outside of the contract, and they argue, rightfully so, for an increase, and according to the union's website, they got a 16% overall increase. Now, that, some got more, some got less, but that's the number that the union, that's a pretty nice increase. And I'm more than willing to spend the money, I just don't want to commit if it were, if it was my decision alone, I don't want to commit more than here, they're saying the economy might change, I'm not so sure about that, but I'm not smart enough to figure it out myself. But, a lot of places are starting to do this to keep their good people. If we did this, their effective rate of pay would go up almost $5 an hour, they're just being paid later in the year, and I've heard some, "I need the money now." But, you know what, you're not the lowest paid person in this job, there are other places that are lower than you are. And, you know, I've always believed that a person works for what they're worth. And what I mean by that is, you sell your labor or your skills to the highest bidder, there's other factors sometimes, you want to live closer to home, and all that other good stuff. So, to bring us up to about $21, $22 an hour, if you throw in the five bucks, almost five bucks, based on $10,000, that's pretty damn good. I think it's excellent, and I want to, it looks like we're shaping up to have a good crew. I don't want to lose those guys. Matter of fact, one guy that's coming back, left us, and he's coming back because it wasn't as rosy as he thought it was where he came from.
I think there's other issues involved.
Oh, you mean about health insurance and all, no, okay.
Virtual.
Could be, yeah, I wouldn't doubt it. So, when I, when we talk about the, the last thing is when we talk about the part-timers, we still need them, we will be shorthanded sometimes with a clean, total roster, they're available, that was always the purpose, to fill in the gaps. But it's morphed into a full-time, well, not full-time, part-timers, in other words, they're there, they're expected to be there. Weird, how we, it just, can't see it, we didn't, we have, we're not doing the county roads in the winter, and I'm glad we're not. So, I think this, I mean, it's not like we're trying to hurt them, we're actually trying to help them. I know I heard somebody say, "I need the money now," well, I can't help that, this is the contract that you signed, that you thought was a good deal.
Had that change over a couple of months.
Yeah.
This contract they signed with the union, they just signed it less than a year ago.
Yeah.
I believe it was a three-year contract.
Yes, and they're getting a 2% raise March 1st.
Right, and then again, another 2%.
Yeah.
From now. I mean, all rights, we could just close the book on it, say you're getting what you're getting, or, you know, that's that.
Yeah.
Offering them $10,000 for sitting around for a year, that's a pretty nice little bonus.
They could go get a driving truck anywhere that they go, and get paid that, they'll have their pay.
Then how come they don't?
I don't know, that must be their choice.
Okay.
Because, you know...
It's their choice, but this...
Ridiculous.
Okay, what's that? Oh, I agree with it, and I imagine two years from now, when the contract's up, and there's a negotiation, we're not going to be dealing with 2%, I agree with that, I know that. But, the union itself thinks this is a really square deal, I mean, exceptional.
And we pay the line share, all their health insurance.
Yep.
We have a liberal sick time policy. I'm not sure, I see where they need much more than that. I mean, we could change, I could offer them the same health policy that I have, I pay $265 a week. We could tell them that's their health insurance is going to be now, instead of the town paying for all that. What the town pays for health insurance is equivalent to about six bucks an hour.
Now, I did some back-of-the-envelope calculating over the weekend, and I didn't bring it in because it is truly back-of-the-envelope, but you get the idea of order of magnitude. If you figure all the other things that we pay, the bennies, the stuff that also we're required to pay, disability, all that, you're pushing, on average, almost $30 an hour. And I'm not saying that's wrong, or we can't, we shouldn't do that, we're required to do a lot of it, the retirement plan is an example. So, I mean, if we don't want to do the 10,000, okay, we won't do it. But I, for one, won't support any raise in the hourly salary. We negotiated that in good faith.
And that's not something we can negotiate with them anyway.
No, no, that's another thing, then, they need to go, it says on...
They need to go to the union if they don't want...
The union won't do it, they're embarrassed.
Well, okay, got to figure that out.
Right, but the point being is that it says on the first page of the contract of the union, Teamsters 294 is the sole bargaining agent for these employees. So, they're not, not that, I mean, I like every one of them, but I'm not going to get into conversation, we'll call you a business agent, but by the way, the business agent quote, "These guys should be doing cartwheels." And he's got people that make less than our good people do. Last I looked, the county Carroll makes about a buck and a half an hour less than us, the county makes about $2 less than our guys. Now, I'm not saying that's good, it isn't, but we're working our way towards increasing the salaries. And one person makes, makes almost $19 an hour on our team, and he deserves it, he's been there a long time, I don't have to be questioning that. So, I, I, but we, the thing that we can compete against the private sector, no, we can't. So, I mean, that's the proposal, anybody have any other comments? I have stuff to say. So, I will make... So, I will make the motion that we do what I just said. Do we have a second?
What second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Is that an extension or opposed? Is that an extension or an opposed?
Extension.
What? An extension, okay. Well, you can make an opposed, no one's gonna be offended either, but, all right. I, I think this is a good deal, I really do. Somebody offered me ten thousand dollars to stick around, I'd stick around, particularly as I got closer to that November thirtieth day, and that's the whole point. This is, this is a retention, it's, we're giving them something for something else in return. You're gonna stay here. And if I bet I went over to any other town, they would, they would dance, or count. All right. Patiently waiting. We have a, we had a vacancy in our, with our town historian that opened up in about, I don't know, two or three weeks ago, something like that. And we have somebody that has expressed an interest in the past, and I think she would be fantastic, and we talked amongst ourselves individually, so we don't break any of the open meeting laws, but we all agreed on this, that Ken Young, who's with us tonight, would be an excellent person to take over as our town historian. And you wanna say anything, Ken?
I thank you very much. I, I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to it. I mean, it's only been a few days since I talked with Bill, so I have to do a little bit more talking and kind of figuring out where things are at, but I'm really excited. I teach social studies, history, every single day, so it's something I'm really interested in, and I'm looking forward to it. I've been connected to the Quonesville community my entire life, so...
And I think you're gonna bring a lot of energy to it. I don't wanna put you off the spot.
I hope so.
You already feed the energy, look at her.
Yes, yes. So, well, I appreciate you wanting to do it, and unless, unless there's any further discussion, let's take a motion to make it happen.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, Carrie. I'm out. Anybody on the board have anything they wanna bring up, talk about? No? No? Okay. Bob? No? Okay. In that case, entertain a motion to review the invoices. Oh, we do have one thing.
I didn't remind me.
The judge's annual report. Notice I threw that over here. And it is, here it is. We have to do this once a year. Look at the judge's annual report, approve it, it's not, that just came up today, so that's why it's not on the agenda. Otherwise, it would have been when I sent it out Friday, but there always will be changes to the agenda. We're not gonna just push things out.
She wasn't too busy this year.
No? Well, let me also say one other thing. You see the sheriff's deputy here? It's not at the request of the town of Quonesville. I don't know if you knew that.
Oh, I'm, I don't know, it's my Friday, so this is the most action I'm gonna see on White Soviet. Most people...
Could be a great fight.
Yeah, most people are poking holes in each other. I don't care. They'll punch in each other. If I don't mean, please, go right ahead, take this.
It's too cold, nobody's out there fighting.
Take it up until one AM, I don't care.
No, no, no. You'll be the only one here if I try to...
Or twelve-thirty, so I can get back to the office at one.
You know what we can do simultaneously?
Yeah.
Look at those bills.
Yeah, we can chew and walk on at the same time.
Can we?
I don't know, can we?
I'm not sure, but...
I looked at it earlier.
I'll make the motion to review the invoices.
Okay, we have a motion to review the invoices. I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I guess since we're in the homestretch here, let me just say, this is my first pass at doing a Zoom call. I'm sure there's some input that we'll get from some people, what could be done better, and we'll take that to heart because it looks like that'll be a regular thing, a good thing. Do we have to thug in anything else? No. No, you don't. Just have to approve it. So, we'll take it as it goes, and we'll improve it as it goes. I did a lot of work to figure that out, I couldn't really wanna mess it up, so I guess it was okay. My wife, I just texted my wife, says, "Could you see us in mirrors?" She said, "Yes." Jeff Layden says he could. Not too bad. We gotta cover the line for now. Bill?
Someone fell asleep, huh?
On camera? So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn if there's no other business. So moved. Yep. Yep. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, thank you for all you folks that have tuned in and watched us, and now we're gonna say goodbye.